Okay, we will call this policy and governance meeting to order. All three districts are present. Notice the meeting was properly posted on July twenty fourth, twenty twenty five. Item number one is there in motion to approve the minutes of July eighth.
So.
Second?
All's in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Uh, item number two, status report for ARPA funding allocation.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning. All right.
All right. I haven't been here in a while, but I'm just gonna start big picture and then Danny's gonna get into the weeds. All right. So what we're gonna start with is we're gonna take a step back. As you know, uh, this time of year, we submit your annual report. So your annual report is once a year, we're taking a big picture of what you guys have done for the entire year. It is much more deep than what we have to submit once a quarter. So once a quarter, all we are submitting are your financials and a few different KPIs that are required by the federal government. In your annual report, we have to go much more deeper into the narrative of what you guys have done for the entire year, as well as the outputs and outcomes, as well as um, share about all the community engagement that you've done with your federal funds and track um, any evidence-based interventions that um, were done over the year. So big picture, kind of we take a step back where we've done the last couple of years. You guys had an hundred and fifty-four million dollar allocation uh, in the county. This was the largest county um, in Oklahoma. You guys got the largest allocation of any county in Oklahoma. I'm all let. Think. Let's see if I. No, you're okay. No. And let me know if it's gonna click now. There we go. All right. So in this report, which is several hundred pages, it's broken up into a couple of different ways. One was your authorized funds. So that was your hundred and fifty-four million. Then was your obligated funds. So that's how much that you guys have said up until this date, you guys have a contract. Then liquidated funds, then expended funds. So I'm gonna show you that here. So we've talked about the one fifty-four that you guys have under contract um, and then liquidated, which that means it's gone out of your doors. It's no longer in the county bank account. But you can see there's slightly less that are expended. So you've given it out to your community partners. They also have to meet that December twenty twenty-six deadline. That is the difference here. So they have not necessarily spent all those funds and we have to track that difference there. So that's why you'll see the difference in the hundred million dollars and the eighty-four million. And we reach out to them every quarter to make sure that they're spending that money down and meeting that December twenty twenty-six deadline. All right. And then big picture, there were, these were all the categories that the federal government said that you guys had to spend it in. As you guys know, the majority of your guys' funds were in the public health category. The largest um, next largest category was in that public sector capacity category. And this is all detailed out into the report. And so here we're gonna go a little bit, where are we? Um, I think the biggest thing that we're all thinking about here is we are getting towards the end. We didn't think December twenty twenty-six would get here, but we are getting close and we are tracking to make sure that all those dollars are out and that nothing gets returned back to the federal government, that all those dollars stay here in Oklahoma County. So the biggest thing we're kind of tracking is what are projects that have not moved? So you can see there are two projects at that zero percent. There are twelve projects that are at less than fifty percent. There are at eleven projects that are at uh, more than fifty percent. And excitingly, there are twenty-three projects that are a hundred percent in your public health category. So if you look at these and all of your categories throughout your report, um, we are really looking at what I like to look at is the ones that are not moving. We are super excited about the ones that are completed. We are super excited about the ones that are past the fifty percent. Right now, all of our eyes should really be focused on the ones that are not um, from either less than fifty percent or zero percent. So we had the public health category. We had the negative economic impact category. We had the public sector capacity category. And then the ones that have been closed out is that one-time premium pay, the infrastructure projects and the revenue replacement. The administrative category and the natural disasters. So the only ones that are still open were the EC one, two, and three. So big picture, you guys have a lot of projects, a lot of things to track and a lot of things moving. So those are a hundred and thirty-two projects. Sixty-two, we can all really appreciate that sixty or sixty-six are completed. And then if we look at all of the categories combined, we have those thirty-three that we really wanna keep our eyes on that are less than fifty-five, fifty percent complete. So those really, we want to make sure that those get done, that we don't give any money back. And then we've got um, those thirteen projects yet to start. So the ones that are less than fifty percent and those thirteen yet to start are the ones we really want to focus on. So that's kind of big picture. Danny's gonna get into the weeds.
All right. Good morning. I wanted to build off of Jamie's comments as well on these ones that are yet to start. So I know in our individual meetings, we talked a little bit about um, individual ones in each of your districts, which, which ones might not be moving. And part of that being due to the way that funds were liquidated. So um, several of those projects, I think about half just got their liquidations in this most recent quarter. So when they submitted their quarterly report, they didn't have money to report on. So when we get this next quarter, we'll be able to compare, now that you've gotten your liquidation in Q two, did you spend in Q three or not? And so that will be a better um, comparison versus like, oh, well, we didn't have money. Of course, we couldn't spend it. So that will um, be important for about half of them. And so still kind of maintaining that annual report overview, thinking about things. I know this is gonna get a little bit repetitive because she just talked about EC codes. Um, but this is what your annual report looks like overall. So this is hosted on the Oklahoma County website. When you go onto the oklahomacounty.org and you click, click on the American Rescue Plan Act tab, it will take you to um, our page that has this report on there. It has compliance materials on there. It has all the reports from the previous years as well. And so you can kind of see the growth of your projects as well. You can see where we started with. You're like, hey, we're just now doing our community engagement and getting out and deciding where these funds are gonna go, all the way to now, hey, look at how far these projects have progressed. So we do a general overview um, that gives everybody that story. We do the fund updates, just like we do here. Here's where we're at in the year. We talk about the community engagement that we've done. So that goes all the way back to when we first, first started doing surveys and getting out into the community. But it also includes the things that we still do and are ongoing with your sub recipients. So we always are doing compliance webinars before um, each quarterly report. And we are always a open line of communication for the sub recipients. And then we like to do workshops with them as well. So um, just a couple of months ago, we had done a design thinking workshop with your sub recipients where we brought them in and helped them think about how to sell their grants, like how they're telling their story um, to future funders as well. So we are continuously staying involved with them. And then talking about your performance reporting, that is what uh, Jamie was referring to. In the quarterly reports, we always have to submit very specific KPIs um, based on specific projects. That comes from the Department of Treasury. Um, and so those are required uh, performance metrics. But then jumping into six is your large project inventory. So that's going to each one of your projects. And we have set KPIs and worked with each of your sub recipients to have a KPI on their projects. So those are each tracked in those project inventories. So you'll see here, it stops at six, but there's three pages of the table of contents at the bottom. And that's because after six, it just breaks out into these ECs. So of the ECs that you could fund, these are the ones that you guys have spent dollars in. And as Jamie mentioned, the ones that are really still in action are that EC one, EC two, and EC three. Premium pay was closed last year, maybe even the year before. Your infrastructure projects have come to a completion that was um, things like your drainage covert, your revenue replacement projects. Um, one of those is already fully expended. And then the other one is still ongoing with the HVAC at the detention center, but will be expended. And then uh, your administrative costs and then the natural disasters, that specifically was um, for a generator. And so that one is completed as well. I won't go too, too deep into this uh, cause we've been around for a little while with you guys. But this is just a general overview of what you could do in each of these categories. So in public health is specifically, you guys have forty-eight projects. Um, and this is a wide range of things. This includes things like COVID supplies. This was PPE. This is testing kits. Um, this was implementing social distancing um, activities um, and other things that would fall under public health in your community facilities. Your negative economic impacts is where most of your sub recipients fall. So this is where it's gonna be these impacts to the community, your impacts tourism and things like that, where we need to elevate our community partners so that they can continue to be successful after COVID. Your public sector capacity is a lot of your more internal projects. So those are the things on how do you guys continue to grow and be beneficial after COVID um, concluded. Our premium pay, of course, was for all of our dedicated workers. Infrastructure is relatively straightforward. We didn't have very many projects in that area, but we're able to do the county uh, drainage covert inventory, which will extremely help for, for water and flooding in the future. And then also we have done um, a meter replacement in the city of Bethany. And that was able to give a bunch of uh, fresh meters to, I think, about a hundred and fifty homes, which is great. Uh, revenue replacement, as we said, that's your HVAC systems and then administrative and natural disasters. So we'll talk a little bit about the project overviews, just to give you some insight of what your EC codes per projects have kind of been doing. So this is the way it's broken out when you go into the annual report. After you start getting into the project inventory, it's broken out specifically by the uh, EC codes and even then further down by their subcategories. And so we get to highlight all of the wonderful things that your sub recipients have done in those categories and how y'all have been able to influence that in the county. So overarching, some of the big things that we look like, uh, like we said here is your COVID supplies, your improvement to your congregate settings. This included some of your contact tracing, your cameras. Um, this also includes mental health programs and then community violence interventions. So there are obviously more outcomes than just the ones that are listed for each of these subsections. Um, but just pulling one so that we can run through it quickly, rather than going through all a hundred and forty-two of your projects, we just wanted to give you some big overarching views of what is in that annual report. So when you're looking at your COVID testing, overall, your outcome, there was nearly uh, twelve hundred tests that were, or twelve thousand tasks that were ordered when y'all were going through the COVID testing phase of things. With your contact tracing, there has been a hundred and ninety-five new cameras installed within the community um, buildings. And that includes the ability to do the contact tracing, to see if uh, individuals have come into contact with one another while they have been sick. And then uh, a lot of your prevention and congregate setting, so your improvements um, due to COVID and needing, needs for uh, social distancing, that benefits seventeen hundred staff, you know, a day. And that's not including your individuals that are coming in and out of the facility um, to receive services. So that's just a staff number. Personal protective equipment, I know these feel kind of old. We haven't done anything new in something like that or COVID testing in many, many years. But it's always good to look back at how much was done. And so there was, you know, forty-one thousand masks that were purchased and that three thousand, or that three million dollar number, that is incorrect. That is an extra three, um, but three hundred and seventy-four thousand gloves as well. And then moving into medical expenses, this is where we are looking at your COVID reimbursement. Um, so these are when your employees have been out sick. Um, and we have been doing COVID medical claim reimbursements. And then this also has included the cremation services for the indigent that were um, impacted by COVID. So then that was all really mostly internal county related projects. We get to jump over into some of these more um, public facing pieces. And so one of the really exciting improvements in uh, one point seven, which is uh, other necessary public health expenses related to COVID, was the ability to bring EMS access into the town of Luther, which impacts that sixteen hundred uh, residents on a daily basis. So they have access to EMS in case of emergency because they uh, the previous provider could no longer provide services there. So these funds have allowed them to bring in somebody to take care of the community. With your community violence interventions, you do have a couple of county projects that are ongoing with community violence. That includes at the JJC and at the sheriff's department, and those are running really well and ongoing. But you also have some out in the community. So one being re-merge and so far, and again, not all of these projects are completed. So this is a so far outcome. They have been able to do thirty-four intakes and place those individuals in subsidized housing. So that's a great improvement in getting people housed and taken care of. The Middel Youth and Family Center has worked with a hundred and fifty-one individuals and has provided a hundred and fifty-three new phones to those individuals. That program specifically is working with individuals who have experienced domestic violence and are trying to get out of dangerous situations. And so having access to a communication line, um, whether to family, friends, or immediately to an emergency responder is why having those phones is so important. Jumping over into mental health, we have uh, done quite a bit of telehealth communications in the county. There has been four hundred and sixty total sessions um, at the JJC for one of their telehealth programs. So that's really exciting, knowing our kids are getting um, really great care. And then also, one of your community partners with Variety Care, they have also provided behavioral health services to um, a little over two thousand individuals so far. We get now into the substance use, and this is another great place where your community partners are stepping up. So the Indigo Health Foundation has received financial assistance uh, for, to help cover four qualified patients that are in their in-treatment uh, process. And then Peaceful Family Solutions is working on therapeutic day camps. And this is serving uh, a number of teens during those day camps. So they've been able to run two of those so far. And then going just over into other public health services, so this was kind of, if nothing else, that fell into those other categories in public health, where does it lie now? And so here is where we have things like the Health Alliance for the Uninsured, where they're helping provide prescription access to individuals. Um, and that builds into your county indigent pharmacy as well, which has been able to, just the pharmacy itself almost provide four hundred prescriptions. But HAU and then work very closely together. And you can see HAU has done almost fifteen thousand. So really, really impactful in making sure that people have access to their medications and that it is not an egregious cost. The negative economic impacts has a lot more categories in it. And this is where most of your sub recipients are going to fall, cause these are a lot more of the community-based programs. So it's things like healthy childhood interventions, long-term housing solutions and things like that. Kind of overarching, you guys have funded really important areas like food programs, rent and utility assistance, um, assistance to unemployed workers and uh, underemployed workers, of course, that long-term housing and then that big piece that assistance to nonprofits. So right off the bat, we can talk about the food programs. This has been uh, your regional food bank and Resort OKC are the two we are highlighting. So the regional food bank was able to provide uh, meals to thirty-six, or uh, yeah, thirty-six thousand families. And Resort OKC has done the same for eighteen thousand families. So that's really exciting. Um, getting to see that your communities are being fed. And then moving over into household and utility rent assistance, you guys have given funds towards legal aid and they have worked with a hundred and twenty-nine households to prevent eviction and provide some sort of eviction prevention services. And then same with the Sparrow Project, who has done so with thirty-four households so far. The uh, Tube Ten, which is your assistance to underemployed uh, workers. The project we're highlighting is the Dale Rogers Training Center. So they have so far provided information to two thousand three hundred and ninety-one individuals with a disability on opportunities for self-employment. So their whole program is thinking about, how do we bring people in and set them up for success? They run a training program as well to get them on their feet so that they can operate their own uh, business. Healthy childhood interventions, the, the one-one-one project is actually really exciting. We just got to do their site visit yesterday. Um, it was their closeout. They have fully expended all of their funds. So what they have been doing is they have been assisting households through the care portal. And the way that works is individuals will submit a request um, into the care portal. And this comes from caseworkers. It's not like I can go in and just put in a request Danny wants choose. This has to come from a caseworker and it goes into the system. And then it is vetted by the departments. And then this goes out to get funded throughout the community. So one-one-one project works with local uh, community partners and churches to help fulfill those wishes that people are asking for. So this has included things like um, strollers, bedding and, and clothes and things like that for children in need. And so they were able to serve a hundred and fifty-two households just with the ARPA dollars they received. The long-term housing security and affordable housing uh, section, you guys had four total projects in there and that has included um, your housing for communities and Turning Point Ministries. And what it, that is doing is for housing for communities, they're gonna have six like functional homes for individuals. And then the Turning Point will have forty-seven units. Uh, and then the next one is also related to long-term housing. So this is specifically related to individuals that have um, been unhoused. And so this is where your Cardinal Community Project really falls in. This, they so far worked for twenty-one uh, individuals that have shown progress, improvement. So those individuals come into their facility when they're going through some sort of mental health or physical crisis. And they help them get uh, treatment services and then move them into uh, transitional and permanent housing. Couple more um, related to housing assistance as well. So your rebuilding together has also done seventy-four affordable housing, housing units that are going to be preserved. So really making a great impact in this community on making sure people have access to housing and safe spaces. Now we'll talk a little bit more about medical facilities. And this is specifically for your disproportionately impacted communities. So these are projects that needed to fall within qualified census tracts, because those are the people that have traditionally been underserved. So here, the Community Health Center uh, has been working through multiple phases. They're creating like a whole facility. And so they've completed phases one and phase two is in progress, but phase three is not quite completed. So they're still working through those, but really exciting to see their entire facility coming together as a whole. The strong and healthy communities is related to your neighborhood features. And this again is a Bethany project. There has been a there, I know it says seven homes with sidewalks installed spanning four hundred feet, and that probably doesn't sound like very much. But when you look at the project in its entirety, what this is actually doing is creating an ADA um, service and it is connected to a park. So when you are going past this, it's not just like, oh, we gave a sidewalk to seven homes. It was about increasing the park's capacity to make sure that everybody was safe and secure and had access to mobility. Your strong and healthy communities for rehabilitation of properties, this is uh, related to Christmas connection. So they were able to um, change into a new facility and it needed some renovations so that they, at the end of the day, are able to serve more individuals by having more capacity, because they didn't have to spend their dollars on renovation costs. So their dollars went straight into the community by providing extra clothing, extra items to each family. The disp- uh, ed, oh, excuse me, addressing educational disparities, you have the Offering Heritage Foundation. They have worked with a hundred students so far that are partaking in evidence-based tutoring programs. And then uh, further into addressing some of those educational disparities, disparities, um, we have a number of students that have been participating in evidence-based intervention tutoring programs at seven hundred and thirteen uh, total students. And that includes projects like your Eastside Pride Wrestling Club. And I know that might sound counterintuitive. It's a wrestling club, but they run an after-school program um, where they have software where the kids can come in and actually take classes online and get assistance from other individuals in the facility to set them up for success in the future. And we're seeing really, really great outcomes with that in um, the schools. Talking once more about educational services um, and addressing those disparities. Urban Bridge is providing mental health and wellbeing programs, which is really focused around a holistic wellbeing. Um, and so that's an interesting perspective as well to be looking at as we're thinking about, how do we address people in our communities' um, health and wellbeing needs? Now we get into two point three four. So as you can see here, that's fourteen total projects. That's gonna be a substantial number of your sub recipients fall into this assistance to impacted nonprofits. So that means they took a financial hit during COVID. They were either had to close down or they lost revenue of some sort, and that's why they fall within this category. So specifically, the outcome we have pulled out is for the care center. They have provided a hundred and forty-nine mental health advocacy uh, sessions. And they have done uh, referrals, services and a hundred and five wellness exams. So this is children in your community. I believe it's uh, between three and eighteen um, that are, have gone through some sort of traumatic event. Um, or some sort of domestic violence or something in the home. And so this helps those individuals come in and be able to get those services. And this has also been very impactful. Many of these advocacy sessions um, have been able to actually occur, because the funding that you guys put into this was for an individual who speaks Spanish, so that they could reach more citizens that they couldn't necessarily always communicate as easily with. So this makes that intake process a little bit smoother for everybody involved. And then we have aid to tourism. This includes things like your First Americans Museum. We've got the Edmund History Museum. We've got a couple of sculpture projects that are going on. So those fall under your aid to tourism. And specifically, the American History Museum has been able to see that their um, monthly visitors has continued to increase since COVID. So they obviously had a decline. But since then, in being able to infuse funds into their marketing and media, they've been able to bring in um, and serve almost two hundred thousand uh, individuals in the area by educating them about the importance of your Native Americans in this community. Then we jump over to the public sector capacity. I know you guys know all of the projects that you have funded, but these are the ones you probably hear about every day, cause most of these are going on in your facility um, or with your staff. So we have this falling under public sector workforce, your effective service delivery and then administrative needs that are all going on within. The first one being the uh, payroll and benefits. This is uh, an older project. This was related to when we were taking care of the sheriff's department, because they were working excessive hours and overtime, making sure that we were able to support them during COVID. So during that time, we were able to help uh, cover their payroll and benefits for an extended period of time. Jumping over into the effective service delivery, something that has been included in here is um, those abilities to provide laptops, to provide uh, microphones, things like that, that make getting online easier. And that has been really important at places like the detention center, where we have been able to increase the number of virtual meetings that can be had with family and with lawyers. So this isn't just necessarily a legal service, it's also a way to communicate with their families um, online. Moving over again into some more of the public sector capacity, but specifically related to some of the administrative needs. This is where we have done increased cybersecurity projects. So that included some of your IT projects like the Q radar um, and the network infrastructure upgrades as well. And then we jump over to premium pay. This is again straightforward and a relatively old project. This was the funds that were used in the county and you ended up being able to serve six hundred and sixty-nine workers during that timeframe. So that was at a point in time count is how we had done that calculation. Um, and so that was uh, eligibility was determined by pay and hours worked. Um, and the monthly pay at the time of six thirty twenty twenty-two. All right. Infrastructure projects, moving right along. Here is your uh, two infrastructure projects, one being the city of Bethany Water Replacement Meter. I was off. I said one fifty. It was two sixty. So I was only one ten off. And then of course, the creation of your detailed covert inventory um, to identify future problems and take actions to correct your infrastructure needs. Your revenue replacement is your ongoing projects at the uh, HVAC, with the HVAC. Your administrative, that's us. And then your relief from natural disasters has been the um, ability to provide a generator to Deer Creek. So that if there is a storm, if there is a tornado, those types of things that unfortunately happen frequently in Oklahoma County, they are able to provide generated service, like a power to their community. Um, and this includes uh, when they purchased it, it included a warranty and things like that as well. So it was a really thoughtful purchase to make sure that if there was a disaster in that area, um, everybody could actively get, seek help. So that takes us through, but do you have any questions?
Thank you, Danny. That was a mouthful.
Yeah.
I appreciate everything you've done this past year. And also wanna thank everybody involved at the county, as well as our sub recipients for all the good work they've done this past year.
Absolutely. Next time, we'll see if I can do it even faster. I think I'm the next item, so I'll just wait.
Any question?
No, no. Thank you. I echo that. You know, you guys just do such a great job. And I know the annual report is very extensive. And I know the annual report is very extensive, so thank you for your time on that.
She's really pretty this year. Like you don't necessarily, like, it's really pretty. I'm very excited about it. So check it out online.
Thank you very much, Danny.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to receive report.
Second.
It's been a motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay, item number three, discussion possible action regarding project cancellation, reallocation, increase, or other intended use of the remaining million dollars of unspent funds under ARPA, which is under the Benefits Department. Is it my understanding that all three districts would like to take that and just split it into thirds?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Then I will make a motion to recommend that. So that would be three, three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-three dollars, thirty-three cents.
All right, I will second that.
All those in favor?
Now, quick question on that motion. Do we have a time limit on when we have to bring those items or those recommendations to the VOCC?
Bring the recommendation to split it to the next VOCC. At that point, it would be up to each district to get with Accenture. And where, tell them where they would like to reallocate those funds.
All right.
Yes, we could take the agenda item to VOCC next week so it gets across both boards. And then the just important thing to keep in mind is that yes, it has to go towards your already existing subrecipient projects. And that they do have to be able to meet that expenditure deadline at the end of twenty-twenty-six. So the sooner you guys have your projects, we'll get them onto VOCC on a rolling basis as we're able to update their contracts with their new dollar amounts. So that will kind of default to how quickly y'all are able to pick projects, but just they do have to meet that twenty-twenty-six expenditure deadline.
All right, thank you.
All right, item number four, Jessica, discuss possible action regarding upcoming subrecipient.
This is mine too. So this is related to the budget amendments we were discussing in each of our individual meetings. And so I originally was going to add them on to this agenda for approval and then Joe made a really good point that they have to go to VOCC as well. And so in order to maintain a singular precedent and not delay any additional amendments that will come in because we are getting requests slowly to make some changes as people move things from their categories. We're just going to go ahead and put the agreements on next week's VOCC. That way we don't have to wait for a PNG and then a VOCC to do it. So, but I knew I had talked with each of you about these, so wanted to give you some context. We are still going to be doing them. You will see them next week for approval and signature, but didn't want to set a precedent that they had to come through PNG first.
Very good.
Thanks, Candy.
I think that's all.
Do we need to strike this item or?
Just no action needed.
No action, okay. Okay, item five, we have the ERA program from the Oklahoma County Home Finance Authority. Mr. Jarrett.
Good morning, everybody.
How are you, sir?
Great. How are you guys this morning?
Doing well.
Good. I know you guys are being hit with tons of numbers and so I'm just going to continue the bloodbath here. The, as you guys know, the county was awarded both ERA one and ERA two funds. The period of performance for ERA two ends on September thirtieth of this year, so just about a month and a half away. We kind of wanted to give you an update kind of on where we're at. ERA stands for Emergency Rental Assistance. It was a part of a couple of different packages authorized by Congress where various jurisdictions were allocated awards. Oklahoma County was the recipient of both an ERA one and an ERA two award. ERA one, a little over eight million dollars, where the county entered into at the time. You know, the county didn't have anything set up to kind of administer or relay that information. And so we entered into an agreement with the Oklahoma County Home Finance Authority, a public trust with Oklahoma County as its beneficiary, to be the kind of subrecipient. And then we entered into an arrangement along with several other jurisdictions, including the state, Cleveland County, Tulsa County, City of Oklahoma City, City of Tulsa, with CFO CCP who actually stood up a giant intake organization to vet all of the applications, make sure nobody was double-dipping, compliance with, you know, all of the various rules that they didn't receive too much money, weren't double-dipping from other federal programs, kind of all of that good stuff. ERA two, we received an initial award of just over thirteen-point-two million dollars. And then about halfway through that period of performance, we were awarded another one-point-seven million dollars in reallocated funds. So just like the ARPA award funds, if you hadn't obligated and spent a certain amount of your proceeds within the delegated time, Treasury clawed that back and then redistributed those amongst the highest use organizations. And so Oklahoma County was one of the recipients of those additional funds. Again, we kind of kept our ongoing contract with CFO CCP to continue to vet and, you know, accept those applications on the county's behalf. But then all of those, you know, came back to OCHFA, you know, for reporting purposes, compliance, audit checks, you know, kind of all of those kinds of things to make sure the dollars were actually getting where we said they were going. So there were four major categories that we could expend these ERA funds. Rent, rent arrears, utility payments, and utility arrears payments. So basically, those were the bulk of all of the transactions, especially, you know, for ERA two, went to actual physical payment of, you know, helping people meet their rent obligations so they could stay in their homes, catch up on their rent obligations, pay their utility bills and catch up on their utility bills. That way they weren't at risk of cutoff during the pandemic period. You'll see Oklahoma County received over thirty-four thousand applications for the funds in just within our jurisdiction, which have through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five, two thousand eight hundred and fifty-one unique households have received some sort of dollars to assist with these types of payments. If you look at the average of those twenty-eight hundred individual households, they've received approximately five-point-seven, six months of total assistance. We also specifically allocated some allowable amounts under the ERA two rules, which were a little more generous than the ERA one rules with respect to housing stability, eviction protection, protection, those kinds of things. Where we allocated a little over one-point-two million dollars to legal aid services. And then also we supported the Oklahoma City Key to Home Initiative, kind of the wraparound. Let's move folks from off the streets into supportive services. That way they could get the healthcare, mental healthcare, those kinds of things they need and not continue to perpetuate the bad stuff of the pandemic. We had four community partners that we partnered with, that we tracked specific allocations with. Those were North Care, Catholic Charity, City Care and the City Rescue Mission. Again, the period of performance ends at the end of next month. All the county dollars have been expended or will be expended. We have approximately thirty thousand dollars left in the City of Edmund subaward that we have remaining outstanding. They've been averaging spending well over that, so we're not worried about them not expending those funds. And then we also have an administrative award holdback of approximately eighty thousand dollars and some change that we wanted to make sure we got our full performance out of that before we paid that by the end of the year. I, we, number one, we thank you for your partnership and allowing us to do this. I probably have more strong feelings about it now than I did back then, especially considering when we've tallied up how much time that it's taken on the part of the authority. The authority was kind of in a unique position where we were transitioning between a full-time executive director to no executive director to a part-time executive director. And so that meant I got to step in and it kind of filled those gaps in some of those places. And so just on the OCHFA administrative time, vetting applications, reporting, you know, all meetings with community partners and all that kind of stuff, were over sixteen hundred hours of authority time invested in this program over the last four years. So if you, if you took that on my global scale, that means I spent about fifteen to twenty percent of all of my waking, working hours, working on the ERA project over the last few years. So it's been tough. It's been rewarding, but we thank you for your partnership. Exactly.
Thank you for your time and service.
You bet. Any questions?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, guys.
I'll make a motion to receive report.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, number six, Team Pre-Trial Release Initiative Annual Update. Is this going to be Stacy or Chris? Or both?
I, I just wanted to take two seconds to say thank you so much. Thank you, Jessica. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members for allowing us to come and present our annual report. We're going to let the expert give the presentation. This is Ms. Stacy Cathsner. She is the supervisor, has been the supervisor of the initiative since we've been able to work with you all at the county level. So we're super excited to get to present today. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, so I also have a lot of numbers. This first page in particular has a lot of numbers. I'm not going to go through every one of them. I will say that we identified seven thousand fifty-four individuals to be screened for pre-trial release. Those individuals are people who have eligible charges. So we screen out people who have, we have a list of the more severe charges that don't even get looked at. We ended up recommending to, or submitting for, for pre-trial release to the judges. Eleven forty-seven, so one thousand one hundred and forty-seven individuals for release. And one thousand one hundred and forty were approved. We look through those bookings, those charges and those criminal history backgrounds very closely. And that informs our decisions on who we present to the judge, judges. We also get referrals for pre-trial supervision from other avenues. One of those are the warrant clearing events you hear about that happen usually quarterly. We supervise ninety-one people from those events. And also judges and attorneys can refer people for pre-trial supervision in court as well. And there were four hundred and eighteen of those. In total, we served two thousand sixty-three people in pre-trial release. One thousand eight hundred and forty-one of those were pre-trial release bonds, so conditional bonds or a few OR bonds. One hundred and fifty-two were out-of-custody RID participants. So those twenty, eighteen to twenty-five who are charged with a crime. And then also a monetary bond with team services required. There were seventy. So those are instances where an attorney has requested a bond reduction hearing in front of a judge and the judge has granted a bond reduction, so they have to pay that bond. And in addition to that, they also receive pre-trial release supervision. And on GPS monitor, we supervised one hundred and forty people. Our average days in jail before release was eighteen. I'm going to talk a little bit about what we're doing to try and reduce that period of time in, in a little bit. And our average bond amount was eight thousand fifty-three dollars. And we had an average in number of intakes per month, so new individuals of one hundred and thirty-seven. These are just our demographics. It, it seems to always be an average age of thirty-seven. So we also served sixty-nine percent of those individuals that we served were men and thirty-one percent were females. Ninety-seven were veterans. One thousand three hundred and sixty-eight received SNAP benefits. And one thousand thirty-three reported mental health diagnoses. On site, we have services, the following services. Hygiene closet, clothing closet, food pantry, employment services, recovery classes and support groups and transportation assistance. As soon as we receive new participants who are being supervised by us, we connect them to those immediate services just to get them on their feet and give them what they need in that moment. In addition to that, we connected seven hundred and twenty-five to substance use services, treatment and services, seven hundred and forty-nine to mental health treatment and services. One hundred and ninety-four people gained housing while in the program and two hundred and fifteen resided in sober living. And twenty-three completed their GED also while in the program. These are the exciting numbers. Our court appearance rate was eighty-four percent. And our arrest-free rate while on pre-trial release was eighty-nine percent. Bonds revoked for failure to comply were four percent. And then you'll see that we submitted nine hundred and eighty-one violations to the court. And of those violations, six percent resulted in the court revoking the bond. Those violations could range from not reporting at the frequency that they are required to, could be that they tested positive for a substance if they were required to drug test. If that is the case, what we typically do is connect them to any sort of substance resources, substance use resources graduated, depending on the severity. And we explain that to the judge and follow up with the judge on their progress with those referrals. The other very exciting part of our outcomes are our sentencing outcomes. Thirty-seven percent of all of those in pre-trial release over the past year, the charges were dismissed. Twenty-three percent got some sort of court diversion program. Nineteen percent received deferred sentences. Twenty, oh, sorry. Ten percent received suspended sentences. Six percent received fines only. Three percent received county jail time, which usually comes with credit for time served, depending on how long they were held before they were released. And only two percent received prison sentences. So the vast majority remained out of custody. The financial impact, the average length of time in the program per participant is one hundred and twelve days. The average cost of team supervision is six-seventy-eight per day. And the cost of detention in the Oklahoma County Detention Center is sixty-six forty-nine. And that results in a detention cost savings of nine-point-four million. That does not include anyone who failed to appear in, for any court appearance while in the program or whose bond was revoked for failure to comply. So only those successfully sentenced or those still active as of July thirty-first.
Since you mentioned it, what are, what is being done to reduce the incarceration time?
The time. So we have for the past three to four weeks been implementing the Public Safety Assessment, a sub, uh, Public Safety Assessment, the PSA, which is a validated risk assessment tool. It's a national best practice. And it utilizes the backgrounds of anyone booked in. And it, it looks at risk to appear and risk of criminal activity. And we can do that assessment just with the criminal history data. We're getting most of those done within a day of someone being booked. And in coordination with the jail, doing the interviews with those individuals because we have to have their consent to move forward. And also in an interview, we can determine if we need to override their risk score. And the past three to four weeks, we've generally been And the past three to four weeks, we've generally been getting people out within a day or two of that interview. So we're already seeing reduced amounts of time that people are incarcerated before release. I'll also comment, one of the reasons for the eighteen days average of releases is that not everyone who's supervised comes from our screening process. Some people, like I said, are referrals from attorneys during court. And usually those charges are a little, not always, but sometimes more severe, and those individuals have been in custody for longer periods of time. So that impacts that eighteen days.
Okay. Chris, you look like you're about to jump out of your seat here.
Yeah, I just wanted to underscore the, the, the numbers, I mean, like, we're reporting what they are. But we have about thirty percent-ish that would be referred to us, to our program, through a private attorney who has been advocating for the person to be in our program. And it's not uncommon for that to occur, maybe about six months. I mean, for the judges to say, okay, you know, after all that process gets worked out, we're gonna put this person in teams' pretrial services with the following conditions. And that really does skew that eighteen-day number. I think even before the PSA, for, for just our standard process that we've been able to work out with the district attorney's office and the public defender's office and the, the judges, it's about five to six days right now. If a person's going through this standard process of, of having the, the background checks reviewed and, and looked at by all the parties and a final decision made. But with the advent of the PSA, the Public Safety Assessment, we're gonna squeeze that down hopefully to three or four days. That's, that's our, that's our goal.
You said the PSA's been in effect for how long?
Three or four weeks now.
Three or four weeks. And how long do you think it'll be before we kinda really have some hard numbers on what the PSA's been able to do?
Let me tell you what I think, and then Stacy can tell you the truth. I, I, I think we're moving. Like, it's, and I, I wanna say, like, just to give credit where credit's due, kudos to, to Bridget Biffle and the Public Defender's Office, and Vicky Behenna and the District Attorney's Office, and, and our district judges. Like, I wanna be able just to say at this point, we don't decide who we provide services to. The courts decide that. And, and, and that, that determination is made. We provide services and supervision and accountability to whomever the courts, you know, delegate to our care. That being said, I think there is a lot of excitement. I think everybody is, is hopeful and enthusiastic that this standardized process is not only gonna lead to more efficiencies, but better informed decisions. We have science behind us. We have best practices behind us. We have the evidence behind us on what is gonna give us a chance to make the best decision. So I think the answer to your question is, is we've implemented it. It, it's happening right now. It's being used. There is a learning curve for all of us, for all the partners to be able to, everybody's gotta be able to understand what the information in the Public Safety Assessment is, and, and how it works, and how it should be implemented. And so I, I'm gonna guess, we're, within three months, we're gonna be clicking at a, at a, at a higher level and moving at a, at a, at a pace that, that will really help us get to where we wanna be. I would say we're two or three months away from, from seeing, from hitting our full stride.
I really hope so, because when you look at the, the daily high count, the daily high count of the county jail has been hitting, uh, average around seventeen fifty-eight or so, which has been a high number. So I really hope these, what is called PSAs, actually do work long-term.
Yeah, let me add to that. With the PSA, something we're excited about as well is it helps us to target services based on risk level. So we're hoping to see those that might have very little criminal history, very little history of failure to appear. And those sorts of people would maybe get a score of one, which would be an OR. And we're hoping to identify that very quickly so that we can just get them out and provide services if they need them, but not require any conditions. But reserve those conditions for the people with higher scores. That's, that's our goal, is to be able to do that quickly. I think that Chris is correct in saying two to three months. I don't think that he's making things up there because I have seen already the, the smaller amount of time that people are being held before release. I'll also tell you that every day our team gets the bookings list, and we go through that bookings list every single day. We do take the charges out that we either by statute can't supervise or because there's been an agreement by the Court Services Advisory Board that those are charges we would not supervise, or that we would not seek to supervise.
Can I, can I just also say, I, I wanna not miss this opportunity, and we are truly, truly, truly thankful to get to be here and to have this conversation and to share this information, and appreciate your questions. I wanna also be able to say, just as a point of information, we do not serve individuals arrested and processed into the county detention center on municipal charges. We don't do that. We only supervise county, you know, and, and state charges. That being said, there has been an influx of municipal, the, the court system is back in full swing post-COVID now. And so we're seeing numbers pre-COVID now. Nobody, Mr. Pettis, I wanna give you my word, we want that jail population to be down to twelve hundred. I, I promise you, we do. And we're working every day to try to expedite that. But I just wanna give the caveat. We do not supervise municipal, you know, people who are being detained on municipal charges. And I, I think another factor, and again, this is not finger pointing, it's just the reality. There is an increased backlog in moving people who have been sentenced to DOC custody from the jail. You know, this has well been documented. So there's some, there's some factors. We think the PSA is going to help, and, and we hope that we can get this down to, we don't want anybody staying one second longer in the county detention center than they need to stay there. And we're trying to squeeze that down as, 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 as quickly as we can in a most efficient and responsible manner. But there are also some factors that are beyond the purview of this initiative that may be adding to the jail population.
Any other questions?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Item seven, update on the Oklahoma County Retention Policy Center project from Iron Mountain. Do we have Christopher or Michelle with us? Nobody here today? Oh, they're on series. Okay.
I will mention for reference while we're waiting for Michelle and Chris to join us. And so just wanted to add this to the agenda today in order to provide an update on status. We meet weekly, every Monday, in order to go through where we're at in regards to the creation of this policy, and then any information needed from all the different departments. And so they'll, they have a quick slide that they'll review. But I'm happy to report that we have received information from all of the departments. And so we're just gathering a little bit more from benefits once John gets back. And we should have everything that we need in order to move forward. Each one of the elected officials, I just wanted to share my appreciation for them in regards to sharing with us what they've already created. This intent was to create a policy for the BOCC departments and anybody else that needed assistance in that. And so we just took their reports and are including it in, in the documentation in regards to reference. And so since we have new chief deputies, since this was put forth and approved for ARFA funding, the funds that we allocated towards this project was a hundred and five thousand dollars. And so Iron Mountain has done a really great job in regards to their diligence and meeting weekly. And so I thought it would be good for them to give you a quick update in regards to where we're at on the status and the timeframe to meet the obligation by the end of twenty twenty-six.
Christopher, you're on the line?
I know we were having connection problems earlier. So what we can do, just because this is a, a long agenda, and we can add them to September's. And at that time, since we have a policy that has put, oh, good. Chris, Michelle.
Yeah. Yes. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, Chris. Thank you for joining us.
Great. No worries. Now, I've been on the line, and I apologize for the technical difficulty here. But just to build a little bit on what was stated there, and thanks for the, the updates there. First and foremost, I wanted to say it's been a pleasure working with both Jessica Clayton and Dane Coffey on this project. They've been great catalysts for a, a number of the things that were just mentioned earlier around gathering information from the different groups and really setting a great path for us to engage and work with them about their records and information management practices. You know, in most cases, you know, people don't really, or don't really bother, or retention isn't always top of mind until, you know, the time comes you have to produce records or potentially dispose of your record. So again, we appreciate all the efforts to enable us to engage them to build the retention schedule. So also, really what we're doing here is building sort of two components. We're building the retention schedule itself, which will include the various categories of records that are utilized across the county. We'll do some research around the statutes and laws that govern these various categories of records. And we'll produce a document that will sort of capture not only all the, not only all of the categories of records that are currently utilized, but also the required retention period for those records and how long they're be, they are to be kept before they are disposed of. We're on track to produce a draft in about a week, you know, for an initial review by the departments to then, in the offices, to weigh in in terms of any other sort of business-related requirements for where they may need to keep records as well. So we'll begin that process, you know, again, in about a week. The second component is the creation of a records policy, which will outline things like records roles and responsibilities, you know, how records are to be kept for legal hold. Again, more sort of governance and policy-related items. So that was completed on, on July thirtieth and distributed to the project team, who are now working on a plan to socialize it with other, with other stakeholders for their feedback, which will, which they will provide to us to go ahead and finalize that document. So I know that's in the works, and we're looking to have that done in the, you know, next few weeks as well. So again, things are going great thus far. We truly appreciate, excuse me, we truly appreciate the support to engage the various groups across the county. So, and we look forward to continuing our work.
Okay. Thank you, Chris. Were there any questions from board?
No.
Okay. We appreciate it, Chris. Thank you very much.
Thank you all as well.
I'll make a motion to receive report.
Second. All those in favors?
Aye.
Okay. Item eight, recommendation of approval of an interlocal agreement between BOCC and Buy Board. Ms. Ashley.
Good morning. This is for a new cooperative purchasing agreement. It's Buy Board. We had two requests come in from two of the three districts over the past few years for several items that are on this cooperative. We finally got it approved through the DA's office after reviewing it. And I think there's a few things that are important to note about this. It doesn't change anything that we do currently. It just adds to it. As an option, it's similar to Omni and Sourcewell. And there was legislation that passed this last session that prevents it from being used for new construction projects. So I think that was one of the main concerns with the DA's office on reviewing whether to approve this or not. So we're just asking for approval.
Thank you very much, Sarah.
I think this is great. We have a piece of equipment we would like to purchase this week. Well, as soon as, as soon as this is in place. So we're excited to utilize it. Yes, absolutely. So I'll make a motion to approve.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay. Number nine, Ms. Hannah, MGT Consulting.
Good morning. So the MGT consultants help us establish what our daily rate is to house a juvenile in the detention center. And part of that daily rate is going to be what you speak about today in executive session and, and negotiating our contract with OJ. So I'd request you defer any action on this until after that executive session.
Okay. Is there a motion to defer until?
Move to defer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, number ten, the P-card. Ms. Ashley again.
This is to provide an update to previous update that I brought to P and G back in February. And we didn't finalize it. We needed to do a couple of cleanup items on the master list, which is before you now. And since then, we've had a couple of other requests come in. So the first one is we'd like to increase District Three's P-card, card limit to twenty thousand. I believe it's ten right now. And we went ahead and District One had a previous user that's no longer here. We removed them, as well as the social services account. And I just wanted to, since I didn't go back to BOCC the first time, I needed to, a request again that I be given permission to get a card and have administrator roles to administer P-card program.
Any discussion?
No.
Is there a motion? Move the item.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. I apologize for interrupting as a clarifying point. Are you receiving this or approving it?
Approving it for recognition.
Okay, thank you.
Number eleven, MIS telework exemption request. Dean. So it's just a repeat last quarter?
Is it this time again?
Yeah, you guys asked for quarterly. Here it is.
Wow.
Yeah.
Time flies.
It does, doesn't it?
All right. Is there a motion to receive? Move the item. All right.
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
See you in November.
What's that?
See you in November.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dean. Okay. Number twelve, August twenty twenty-five, BOCC Employee of the Month. Anybody want to take that one? There we go. Gianna.
Yes, we had two nominations for the month of August for Employee of the Month.
Okay, we have Fredo Flores and Ron Chandler.
I'll make a motion to accept and recommend both Option A and Option B.
All right, second. Motion and second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Is there a motion to recess into executive session? A move?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, is there a motion to return from executive session?
So move.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, with regard to item number nine, I'll make a motion for Hannah Whip to move into discussions with MGT regarding a detention rate for juvenile.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And with regard to executive session, we will proceed as discussed. Is there any participation?
Would you like to take a motion on item forty?
Oh.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, motion to proceed. Sorry, is there a second? There's motion of second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those in favor?